Seven, Wednesday, August 24th, 2016. I'd like to call and board with the regular meeting of the Moni Lodge Board. Please rise from the platform.
The ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America, and through the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with a living justice for all.
Good evening, Mayor, Republicans, Village. Please pray with me. How good and how pleasant it is for brothers to dwell together in unity. Oh, Lord, we thank you for your grace and your mercy. We thank you for the citizens of this village, as that you will continue to shower favor upon them. Now, as we come together, Lord God, to conduct the business of this village, let us remember that even though there's business in this village, there are citizens here. And so, let us be of one mind. Let us have compassion for one another. Let us demonstrate brotherly love one toward another, that your work and that your will will be done. Order our steps in your word, and we'll be careful to give you the praise, the honor, and the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please. Trustee Moore is back here. Trustee Pop, we are raising for President Gonzalez.
Here.
Gray there. And also President. And this time we'll go to open the public agenda. I don't know if you can, six, three minutes, give your name and address. Anybody for an agenda? Moving on to the next item, consent agenda. I understand motion to approve the consent agenda.
Salute.
Thank you. Holston, Tracy, Brooke, please.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, with your approval, I believe we have outside counsel present before, because it's in the executive session. So, if we could jump ahead. I understand motion to go into executive session on matters as listed pertaining to personnel, collective bargaining, litigation, real estate, whatever, all the items. I don't know if we can cover all of that, but if we can go ahead and address those things. I understand motion to go into executive session, please.
All right.
Second.
Tracy and Gonzalez, Brooke, please.
Trustee Tracy?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Six, four. And then... We'll return. I'll make sure we're all... We're returning from executive session. Brooke, please.
Trustee Holston?
Present.
Moore?
Here.
Pop?
Here.
Tracy?
President.
Gonzalez?
Here.
There.
Mr. Clerk, do you have anything? No, no, sir. One of the mayors report we have the IML conference coming up. Just want to remind you, Michelle, we need to know if we can possibly end of this week in order to make our proper reservations and all that. So, if you could contact, I guess, Michelle by Friday noon. Is that a fair enough time to make sure we get our reservations done?
Yes.
If you're attending to an IML for one day, multiple days, whatever the case may be, so we can get the appropriate best price option available for that. So, just contact Michelle sometime on Friday, if possible, whatever. Additionally, I wanted to let the board know, there was an invitation that was sent to me. I'm extending it to the rest of the board and the public to be aware of on Thursday, September 29th at 9:00 a.m. The Cremoni Middle School, which is located at 635 Holstead Road in University Park, we've been invited to join them for a reception and a guided tour of the building, and I believe it's technically a grand opening ceremony as well. So, that starts at 9:00 a.m. with a 9:30 a.m. tour of the facility. So, for anyone who are interested in being a part of that, that may be on September 29th. It's a Thursday at 9:20. Anything else? Mr. Minister?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. First item on my report is board action request. During the village's efforts to address the influence and infiltration reduction program, the Department of Public Works has been diligently working to reduce poor sanitary sewer overflow, basement backups, and high operating costs for treating rainwater. Additionally, any, another component to this response has been to address failed stormwater management systems throughout the village. During the village's project, an important tool has been used to help locate failed systems. The outsourced price quote for this televised recorded service with the entirety of the project was quoted at $280,818. The purchase price quote for the same system, the Rover X camera system, is $89,116.60. This price is guaranteed through the National Joint Powers Alliance. The purchase of this equipment would ensure that a ready tool would be available in-house to train staff for most projects, thus providing televised data for technical reference and substantial cost savings to the village. So, we would ask for consideration for a motion to approve the purchase of the Rover X camera system through the National Joint Powers Alliance not to exceed $90,000. Any discussion?
I will make that motion. Second. Holston and Gray, Brooke, please.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Is that a, just a, just a make point of purchase?
Thank you. With that approval, I'm just going to ask Superintendent Grisell, if you can just touch upon now with the purchase, the approval of purchase this camera, moving forward, what the next steps would be.
Thank you. Good evening, panel. We have the camera in place now, so what we would like to do, if we're going to go ahead and start with the second phase of the smoke testing, we will follow the same protocols we did. If you remember, the village board approved us to do the smoke testing throughout the village. We chose to address the central portion and the west portion, some of the north that were the highest peaking factors of the kilometers that we installed as far as that INI. So, now we want to go ahead and address the bidding to repair those structures. They were in booklets and pamphlets that I handed out to you two weeks ago and illustrated some of the repairs that were found. There was some supporting documentation, and I was still interested that we've even seen some of the supporting pictures to go along with that. So, now we can kind of hone down on that bid and what exactly what we're looking for to get those processes taken care of, as well as finish the smoke testing in the other regions of the town, which would be the south end and the east end, I'm sorry, yeah, east end, and finish the portions of north that we didn't get to, thus covering the whole village's footprint with the sanitary that we have to take care of. With doing that, we'll be able to set up some of the repairs for next year, and it'll keep this momentum going for repairing and improving our infrastructure, thus reducing operating costs when it comes to that, those kinds of utilities. There'll be some other portions of this and some other components that we'll pull there that we'll be touching and addressing on later, with some of the private services that we found that were not in compliance, but that's the topic for later date. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, the second item I have under my report is an update on the Egyptian Trail. Two points, one is on the roundabouts. So, the village has been in negotiations with right-of-way acquisition throughout Egyptian Trail on six parcels in order to put our water main in place. The final parcel has been purchased, and now the, that paperwork is being recorded this week with the, I'm sorry, with the county, and also the parcels, that paperwork is being sent to IDOT for their files to allow us to move forward. Our IDOT letting date for the roundabout is November 4th of 2016, and we're looking to begin moving forward with the implementation then of our water main. So, the water main project, as you would recall, the, the village has joining and teaming up with Aqua, and we are, we have the engineering firms working together, and we're ready, in fact, to go to bid. The publication has been put out yesterday, and it's in today's paper, and the bid due date is scheduled to be open September the 8th, and then the awarding of the bids will be on September the 14th as planned. There is a pre-construction meeting with the engineers on August the 30th, and then a final pre-construction meeting is planned for September 28th, and that is to coordinate the project. So, things are on track. We're moving forward. It's going to start taking traction and moving quickly. Any questions?
So, we're going to meet a vote on that. You're just allowed to say that there will be a vote coming first or second meeting in September.
That is correct, yes. That's all I have. Thank you.
We're going to the officials' report. Bullets, please.
Just one thing tonight with the road project that's going on over in the Highlands. Everything is moving along smoothly. Check the website for the updates. Main trunk lines installed, space one. They have been putting sewer systems in. I believe they're on Roosevelt right now. One thing in a sense of consideration, no discussion, I just food for thought, since I live in the Highlands, I've had people ask me about the guard rail that needs taking down as far as getting in and out of Highlands. It has lightened up traffic. The first couple of weeks were a little hectic. I know that the mayor and DJ and the chief officers out there, just food for thought to see in the future. We just want to leave that rail down or bring it back up. I've had people, both sides have been asking me, as I'm sitting out there right away, watching my kids ride around. So, with that, I have no other report tonight.
I think, if I may, Trustee Gray, I know that we talked about leaving it open at least through this, the next year's construction season because of traffic issues. So, in theory, in the next season, we can...
I'd like to just...
Yeah, absolutely. Parks and Recreation, Trustee Gonzalez, please.
Just a couple of things, and just to let everybody know, the next issue of the Parks and Rec closure, one in the mail today, so expect to see it in the next couple of days. And if there's any, anybody out in the residents who has an idea for a kind of a program or being an instructor, we'd love to hear from you, so please call Mary Jo here at the village, 534-8302. And we have our last movie in the park, Weather Willing, on Friday, Hotel Transylvania Two, and the Fall Fest coming up quickly, and you can still get the mega pass for $45 per person to use all three days, available here in Village Hall. And we're also still looking for a handful, about a dozen or so volunteers to help in the ticket booths and things during the weekend. So, if you or anybody you know that can help us out, much appreciated. End of report.
My next, Trustee Moore?
And Trustee Gonzalez, you can put me down as a volunteer. The ticket booth. Regarding that village newsletter, we have some very important information in there regarding the property tax rebate program that we have proposed to the village. So, there's some, some details about that in there. I don't believe it's, I think we're at the draft stage, but there is some information on that in the current village newsletter, so you'll want to read that. We got our village auditors out last week, and they may need to be one day here at the village hall to complete their audit field work. We've also been, each trustee has been provided information regarding a company called Azivarm. This company specializes in maximizing revenues for villages through specialized electronic revenue review. Please look for the information, and if you would be interested in a presentation, trustees, please let the finance director know. General fund expenses for the first three months, am I still on? For the first three months are at 24% of budgeted expenses. Each trustee has been provided a worksheet, sheet that further breaks out the departmental expenses. Any questions, please talk to Daryl. And that's the end of my report.
Mr. Bishop, with trustee Holston?
Couple of things. Kevin and I today attended the economic development training for local elected and appointed officials, a four-hour class at the village of Frankfurt. Way too much information for me to share tonight, so I won't take any additional time, but I'll try to put something together for a future meeting of information. This was the third one that I've attended, and very good information. Lots of other people from Will County there, so it's always good to find out that everybody else has similar concerns and similar opportunities. Additionally, I'd like to update you on a couple of things that Kevin's provided me information on. One, Heidi, you'll be interested in this. Video gaming revenues in light of the recent opening of Lacy's Place and the imminent opening of another video gaming power, par, excuse me. It seems appropriate to remind our community of the benefit these businesses provide more than simply filling out former vacant spaces in our strip malls. Back when the village allowed, acted to allow video gaming in Moni, it was stipulated that the village revenues would be earmarked to help fund the parks and recreation programs. In the last fiscal year, video gaming revenue provided $115,000 for parks and recreation programs, nearly half the budget for this year. This support figures to increase through the current fiscal year. Through this program, the village has been able to improve services provided by parks and rec without adding any burden to the property taxpayers. Additionally, the alcohol, tobacco, firearms tax. When the village first instituted a local tax on the sale of alcohol, tobacco, and firearms a few years ago, it was not universally embraced. Please remember that 75% of these revenues are dedicated to funding public safety programs like equipment, training, and other supplementary resources for the police department, as well as support of the EMA program. Where does the other 25% go? This program was set aside, the additional 25% to assist businesses in Moni with property improvements and beautification. If a business files its paperwork on time for 12 consecutive months, your business is eligible to receive financial support from the village for the aforementioned improvements. File on time, get a quote for your desired improvements, and we'll work with you to break it to fruition. End of report.
No one heard from Trustee Pop?
Yes, Julie's Cafe build out. The building permit was picked up. Final plumbing did not pass, but there's just some minor adjustments required for it. XPO Logistics, the internal office building, there. The permit's been picked up, the rough plumbing passed, and rough framing and electrical passed. Dirty Meadows, the build out, plans under review, waiting on building permit. The bank that is, the builder is working with has changed ownership, so the project financing is just temporarily on hold until all the paperwork is done. Dollar General, building permit was applied for, pre-scheduled made, P&amp;Z passed, and we're waiting on board approval. That's us, obviously. Project B plans are under review and waiting on foundation permits. Building inspections to date, there's none. Resale rental inspections this month were 35. Building permits issued this month was 18 at a total cost of $2,390 with a value of Code enforcement warning notices issued this month were 19. End of report.
Thank you. Morning safety, Trustee Tracy?
I've got a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. I'll start off with EMA. On August 6th, members of the Moni CIR EMA and Police Department conducted a joint disaster exercise at the village hall and park grounds. Emergency response teams coordinated simulated rescue efforts, which included a first aid triage tent, a search and rescue team, and a staff command operations center. This training served as a good learning experience for all members. On August 16th, Moni EMA conducted a joint search and rescue training exercise with Crete EMA, Crete Fire Department, and the Crete Police Department. Moni EMA would like to thank the village of Crete for its continued partnership and assistance given over the years to the Moni EMA team. On August 20th and August 27th, Moni Police Department Sergeant Lazrody is conducting first aid CPR training for 17 EMA and CIR team members. A special thanks to the Moni Police Department and police. This is a message from the Moni Police Department. Between August 10th and August 13th, five motor vehicles were stolen from four families in Moni. All five of these vehicles were recovered within days of the loss. Four of these vehicles were recovered in Chicago and its suburbs. The fifth vehicle was recovered, abandoned, unoccupied, and still running, and stuck in a ditch in Moni. Juvenile offenders were taken into custody in other jurisdictions that have been entered into risk punitive justice programs. The common thread in all these motor vehicle thefts was that the vehicles were left unlocked while the keys were within easy access, if not in the ignition. Truly, no one wants to tell you that it's not safe to leave your motor vehicle unlocked with the keys in it, but the reality is that it is not safe practice. Criminals seek the path of least resistance. The path usually starts with an open or unlocked door. The less time a criminal has to spend getting into a motor vehicle, the less likely, the less likely it is that they are going to be observed committing a crime. Leaving valuables in a motor vehicle is also an enticement for a criminal. Wallets, phones, and loose change are more than a common reason to break in, especially if the door is unlocked. Overhead door openers are highly prized as well. Once the garage door is open, many times so is the home. Our suggestion is always lock your doors and keep the keys only where you can reach them. A locked door is best defense against a criminal looking for easy pickings. And onto that, I would like to divert attention to Trustee Holston and his members. Would you like to speak?
Well, in the interest of transparency, I received an email on my village account. I'll read the email. Why is it that Police Sergeant Thomas Grusha is on medical disability for over two months now and has a village police vehicle at his home? Shouldn't the village police vehicle be in Moni? Why does he take his vehicle with him when he is not even working? Why is Gary Rizza and Thomas Pettermas still listed as part-time Moni police officers when both have not been to work since November 2015? They don't even meet the minimum criteria for working part-time. Please bring this up at the next meeting. Please note, the person did not sign their name. I talked with the administrator about this this last week, and, and Ruben, correct me on any of this, or help, as I say this, but as I understand it, Sergeant Grusha, all sergeants have an assigned vehicle that they do take home with them. That's part of the responsibilities they have. He was under medical leave and had begun to therapy two times a week, using the vehicle for that, of course, and is expected back very shortly from medical leave. So, that's seem appropriate. Doesn't seem anything unappropriate about that. The, of the other two people mentioned, one of them was a former part-time person who I believe Chief has been released. The second person is still on the payroll. He's a Will County deputy and is used as a backup for an emergency, which is a good practice when you have a Will County deputy to have on your part-time payroll. So, I think both of those seem to be appropriate. In terms of qualifications, the qualifications for part-time people, and Chief, you know this better than I do, but require two primary things. One is an academy, which is a relatively lengthy process, both of which these people have done, and field training, both of which these people have done. We currently have one person in training for that, going through that same process, and I believe we have a person who has been hired full-time who's going through the same process of training. Am I correct on that, Chief?
The person we just hired full-time is already trained is upcoming ADR transition class. It'll be scheduled by the state of Illinois for him. It has not been scheduled yet.
So, in terms of these people meeting the minimum criteria for the working part-time, they have met the minimum criteria for working part-time, and I wanted to make, bring this to everybody's attention again, in the interest of transparency. I don't know who else would have been copied on the trustees on this, but I wanted to respond to it publicly.
Thank you. Anything else to consider? I have a report. Can this part, we'll go, this part, we'll go to the attorneys' report?
Thank you, Your Honor. Got a few items from board consideration. Before I go to the items set forth on the ordinances, I would ask the board for approval to have the village officials execute the release with respect to their property replacement. It will discuss in executive session.
Break the motion?
Second.
Yeah. Holston and Pop? Brooke, please.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. The first ordinance for the boards to review consideration is labeled K01-8. I believe we've had, thank you, Mayor. We've had discussions on this in the past. I think the board's concern is that a straight fine disordinance, if there is a violation of the weight restriction, will give the village officer the option of going through the Illinois Vehicle Code and/or cite the individual in their section 11411, which gives a straight-out fine, I believe it's $750, for a sign, post-assigned violation. And it also designates which roads will have the 8,000-pound limit and the exceptions therefore. So, there is two options under this ordinance, one under 11411, which is a post-assigned violation, which is straight-out fine, which the board asked for, or under the Illinois Vehicle Code, which is 15-111 through 113.
And Larry, I believe there was a, Trustee Holston brought your exception on, this is K1A, defining weight limits, page four, I believe it was nine, 84. Removing the requirement for it to say authorized to weigh a Cosby weight, it should simply be adjusted to say, what do you have to learn?
Verify the weight thereof.
Okay.
Verify the weight.
Verify the weight. I believe the deputy clerk may have an updated of that, but just to clarify, that was a correction that Trustee Holston identified, and that matches with what the attorney or trustee had, you had for K1B, which is the nundas. I always had the same wording in there.
I believe the clerk was giving the correction to us.
Okay, all right. So, that one change, and not to get too far out of ourselves, but I believe the K1, yes, K1 might be off for K1E, traffic parking penalty, just to jump ahead so you don't see where this is at, or 1A and 1B both go. Sorry, it's not wrong. Yes. If you look at the footer of your document, you make sure you got where you want to say the ordinance, traffic parking penalty, page five, you'll see line 146. Correct. So, this would be, and reference, we'll see this is referenced later in the number one, but this is Title I, Chapter 14, Section 11A-G is where this is referenced, and that is failure to comply with any posted regulations, including but not limited to excessive engine braking or truck and weight route restrictions, penalty shall be 750. So, that's the flat fine that had been recommended previously. And so, that's in this ordinance here, which is a consolidation of all the IP schedules in one.
You said, at least one individually, correct?
Correct. Correct, it's just so everybody knows where that's at, and what section is that will go. All right. So, that one change, any other discussion about K1A, which is the ordinance defining I understand motion to approve the ordinance defining weight limits? I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance defining weight limits.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Holston, Fraser?
No, that was Horn.
I'm sorry. Horn, Fraser. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Fraser?
Yes.
And there's Alice?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item.
I'm sorry. Yes. What's the number?
It's for February 17th. What was it?
1757?
1757.
Thank you. Sorry, Lord.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is under K-01B. It's the ordinance pertaining to highways. It would be the same type of restrictions that we just discussed. The fine would be under the Illinois Vehicle Code and/or the post-assigned ordinance that the mayor just discussed. It's up for the board to review in consideration. And once again, the ordinance will say verify as opposed to weighing the truck itself.
So that's the ordinance pertaining to non-designated highways. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Horn? I have a second. Holston? Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Fraser?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Two.
Yes.
You didn't answer your question.
Sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Karen?
Thank you.
1757. There we go.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is ordinance labeled K-01C. This basically indicates the violations will be under 613. The ordinance would be 11411 setting for the, it's to the administrative hearing process what the fines will be. It's heard in the Village Hall as opposed to the Will County Courthouse, but set forth the violations under 11411.
Okay. Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance pertaining to traffic penalties. Wood?
Second.
Holston and Gray? Roll call, please.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Larry, if you could pause this for a second, I think there might have been a memory. Sure, here. Make sure I'm reading this right. The next one should be police penalty policy. That's K-1D. Okay. The agenda had K-05D and should be K-1D, just to clarify. But the ordinance, the footer should actually say ordinance police penalty policy.
Thanks, Mayor. The next item is K-1.
Excuse me. I didn't hear the number, but I assume it's.
1759. We estimate the number.
You're keeping the order, I see.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Lord, your head.
The next ordinance is labeled K-01D. This basically sets forth the fines and violations. We added littering. The officer's right to cite a person or take the appropriate action for a violation. What we did, it says add 1 each for littering. The rest is the same as the previous ordinance.
And the penalties will remove from this whole grouping and then put it in 11411. And just to review and remind everybody, a lot of this has to do with these, trustee right here, has to do with the simplifying these to fully empower the adjudication process for, and to also simplify it for the officers while they're on the street, because now they can turn to one section where it should have the fines and fees for everything. So, so this is the ordinance pertaining to police penalty policy. Any discussion on this one?
I didn't mean to ask the question. Yes, Chief, have you seen all these different ordinances? Do you have any problem with that? I'm a little late.
No.
But, I guess. I'm late to network.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance pertaining to police penalty policies.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Pop and Gray? Roll call, please.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Fraser?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Fraser?
Yes.
Larry, if you could pause this for a second, I think there might have been a memory. Sure, here. Make sure I'm reading this right. The next one should be police penalty policy. That's K-1D. Okay. The agenda had K-05D and should be K-1D, just to clarify. But the ordinance, the footer should actually say ordinance police penalty policy.
Thanks, Mayor. The next item is K-1.
Excuse me. I didn't hear the number, but I assume it's.
1759. We estimate the number.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Lord, your head.
The next ordinance is labeled K-01D. This basically sets forth the fines and violations. We added littering. The officer's right to cite a person or take the appropriate action for a violation. What we did, it says add 1 each for littering. The rest is the same as the previous ordinance.
And the penalties will remove from this whole grouping and then put it in 11411. And just to review and remind everybody, a lot of this has to do with these, trustee right here, has to do with the simplifying these to fully empower the adjudication process for, and to also simplify it for the officers while they're on the street, because now they can turn to one section where it should have the fines and fees for everything. So, so this is the ordinance pertaining to police penalty policy. Any discussion on this one?
I didn't mean to ask the question. Yes, Chief, have you seen all these different ordinances? Do you have any problem with that? I'm a little late.
No.
But, I guess. I'm late to network.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance pertaining to police penalty policies.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Pop and Gray? Roll call, please.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Fraser?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
No.
And Or?
Yes.
Next one, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. The next one is, I believe it's K-01E. This is, as we referred to, 11411 for the administrative hearing officer. It sets forth the fines and violations, also the weight of the defendants if he or she fails to appear, what their ramifications are, and also the fines set forth if there is a violation, which is also what we just talked about, the posted sign regulation violations of the $750. So all the, basically, in-house citations would be heard before I'm hearing officer, and it sets forth the fines at that person who is subject to.
And just to clarify, especially the place of truck drivers and etc., that sort, fines issued, this one is a lot of effective CBL driving records, if I correct.
I hear so well.
Okay. Any discussion about K-1E, the ordinance pertaining to traffic parking penalties, which is the, as Larry said, the combination of everything? Title I, Chapter 14, Section 11 of the Village Code.
And this is the one that I've had issue with for 11 months.
Correct.
It's defined now as a police penalty policy.
Traffic.
For the truck, yeah, traffic parking penalty, and then now also it has probably 21 violations regarding police regulations that has nothing to do with a traffic parking penalty. I agree that we need a traffic parking penalty and signs thereof, but these violations regarding police regulations that are in this one, 21 of them, 27 of them, I don't believe should be in this. And I understand, making the educators' life a little easier, that we have one policy for this and one code to belabor it to, but having these included in a traffic parking penalty, I totally disagree with.
If I could ask for an expound, the person on that area, John Daniel.
This includes curfew and prostitution and loitering and criminal trespass. It has nothing to do with traffic parking.
If I could ask, if I could ask the council or the chief to expound on this, I believe this is, if I'm correct, this has to do with, this is simply where you define P tickets, and they're called P tickets as a local ordinance violation, and that's where this is all, this is not necessarily pertaining to heavy-handed police issues or else, this is simply a matter of anything that's a local ordinance violation, and there's a potential penalty or fine associated with it, it is already in Title I, 1411.
Great. Then why can't we have a separate ordinance with these more heavy-handed, that has nothing to do with a traffic parking penalty ordinance?
I believe we possibly could, but probably expedite to make it part of the less confusing for the hearing officer, it's usually under one ordinance. Like the mayor said, it's P ticket or a local ticket. So what they want to do is list everything and anything that could possibly be subject to 11411. It might make it easier for the officer also. If that person is going to be cited for a citation, at least it's covered by the ordinance.
Chief, I want to say, Chief, if I may, if it's not included in this section here, then it has to be in the circuit court, and everyone would be considered correct. If it's not included as a viable offense on our ordinance, as we would send it to the circuit court, that there's, you know, no doubt that depends on case, the idea of piling all of them into one ordinance, one spot for the officer, without fines and violations, to calculate anything that's driving us, you know, fantasy.
That being said, you know, certainly if this ordinance recognizes traffic parking penalties referencing 11411, we could have a separate ordinance that has nothing to do with traffic parking penalties, also referencing 11411.
If I may, again from the council, may I ask, what do you call an ordinance violation if you don't call it a P ticket, which is by definition the combination of a traffic parking penalty, so a local ordinance violation?
We just basically, Your Honor, say a local code violation. We call it a P ticket.
But it's a P ticket, parking ticket. Basically, it's, that's the general way about local ordinances are enforced.
Yeah, do you want to keep? Yes, if you want to keep it in-house if at all possible.
If you don't have that here, then it does have to go in the circuit court, which means that there are going to be court costs that are not the same as what we have to deal with. It's not as flexible as an adjudicator would be on behalf of the fact that ultimately, in most of these cases, we're looking for compliance, not revenue. And, Larry, get it?
I think, Your Honor, and trustee Gonzalez, I think it's partly as the chief indicated, it's for convenience sake. It's less paperwork. It's easier for the officer to cite that one section. I believe the hearing officer has, I won't say recommend it, but I think she's taken a look at this ordinance. I believe she authored it, to be honest. But I think most villages like to keep it in-house. And again, we make an expansive list just so we don't forget anything. I think most residents, or any offender too, or defendant, I should say, would like to keep it here as opposed to going to Joliet.
And I would like, trustee Gonzalez initially was against this, but I've spent quite a bit of time this last year working on this. And as I understand it, this does keep more of the revenue in-house for us, which currently we get very little revenue when we do write the tickets. I'm not particularly in favor of writing a lot more tickets, but I'd like to see the revenue that we do write stay in town rather than go to the county. And this does simplify that as well in that regard. So, again, I previously did object, but I've just taken my objection away, because I do think this now meets what we've asked for in terms of simplifying the parking part of it, and I understand why it needs to be in one, in order to make it something that we can see more financial benefit out of it. I don't think there's anything wrong with saying that, but also makes it easier for the officers to write the tickets.
Any other discussion on this?
Mr. Holston and I, we two have spent a lot of time thinking and talking about this in 11 months, and I still maintain, if we're having one ordinance, if we can reference it 11411 in one ordinance, why can't we separate it and still reference the 11411? That's all I have to say.
And I must say that I just cannot in good conscience work for something that starts at $75 and could be $750. I just, even though it's court may not, that was told, charged, you know, fined that much, it might be just $100. If I go for this, so we get phased at $750, I'd lie to that. In that respect mentally, I just, I will not go after some dollars.
I think we did talk about that fines were usually not, that's an extreme range, and they were normally not.
I don't want to leave someone else's hands stuck. Don't be interrupted. We're approving it, and if they approve it, that's going to be the amount of money. And that could financially prove someone in this economy we have.
But isn't that already there? We're not changing that, Jimmy. That was already, that's already on the books.
Get it out there.
Well, we're not the judicial system, though.
We don't have to approve it.
Can we call for a rule?
Sure.
More discussion?
Sure.
Um, I defer to chief on this. Line 189, possession of cannabis substitute half grams, did the state on July 29th change it to 10 grams?
That's where ordinance says, but the state laws change significantly.
Yeah. So should we reword that to 10 grams to comply with state law?
Well, we don't have to change that ordinance.
We change that ordinance?
Okay.
That's all, that's what I was wondering.
There, sir. So, signifies, Section 3, Number 20A, would have to be modified?
So, discussions, too?
Yes, sir.
I want to clarify, trustee Gonzalez, what you're saying. You're not disagreeing with the content here, you would just like to see that in a separate ordinance, correct? Attorney, how much difficulty would that be?
It's doable. I mean, we did pass some ordinances tonight, though, indicating, you know, the post-assigned regulation is part of this ordinance of 750. So you do have those already passed, but you probably could bifurcate the ordinances for penalties versus the other offenses, same provisions. How much the fine would be, it'd be the same. You could probably bifurcate it. Or you could say, Section 11, Subsection B, I would have to do some authoring on it, but...
Or maybe if I could ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Or chief, either one, because I think this is referring to, I know this is how we refer to the traffic or parking ticket or local ordinance penalties, really what this is all recurring. So maybe the heading itself is a concern, and I understand why they offered this because of the title, it's one title that includes three subsections, if you will. Because you have private vehicles, Section A, you have violations of private police regulations, Section B, and those 21 or 27 are already counted, there, trustee Gonzalez, those are all the criminal nature, and so those are technically police regulations. That's something that code enforcement could not necessarily deal with. That would be, but then, Section C is regarding property maintenance. So, of course, I have for you, Larry, is, and I'm kind of maybe going back to trustee Gonzalez, I mean, it does bring in this three subsections here, Larry. I mean, is it prudent, if that be the case, to?
What we could do, Your Honor, would be indicate an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 14, Section 11, Subsection A, violation for vehicles, Subsection B, the violations for police regulations, and Subsection C would be property maintenance. So that way, we'd clarify, it's just not for traffic offenses, it would be for property maintenance and for...
Or just local ordinance violations.
Or simply, yeah, or simply change the title heading of this to ordinance pertaining to local ordinance penalties. If that corrects the issue, is that a better way to handle it? Because it's already in three subsections.
Either way, yes, sir.
Could we change the label on it to pass, satisfy that concern? Is that a acceptable way to handle that? Instead of saying property penalties, we just say ordinance pertaining to local ordinance penalties? Is that a correct way to say that word?
Yes, sir.
If that's okay with trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
And just as a reference point here on that, that is only on this document. Once it gets codified, that gets stripped off of it.
Yes, sir. I mean, that's for internal, but once it goes to Sterling codifier, it's, you know, they'll...
The footnotes and all the stuff go with it.
Yes. Absolutely.
So actually, the ordinance itself to be correct, if I, if I may, Larry, aside from the internal labels we use while we're handling this document. Aside from the internal labels we use while we're handling this document currently, the actual ordinance is pertaining to an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 14, Section 11 of the current village code. That is actually what the ordinance is.
Yes.
We use a clerk, the clerk, the council uses a footer on here to indicate. So it's easier to call it from in the doc, if you want. So that titling, we can change the title on that, if that's acceptable, trustee Gonzalez.
And that'll show what you said in the codifiers, then?
The title doesn't, the footer down there doesn't show up anywhere.
Okay.
That's only a temporary force to get it processed through the internal paperwork here. That labeling, the traffic parking penalty label disappears if it's against the sermon.
I call a question.
I understand the motion to approve?
Make that motion.
Or, Raisik? I'm sorry, if I may, with the discussion, with the amendment to the footer, so that our internal documents reflect the concern as...
Local ordinance penalties?
Local ordinance penalty instead of traffic parking penalty. If that's acceptable, you had a motion, the gentleman that made the motion, can we affirm that?
Sure.
And the second as well? Okay. With that modification, as presented, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Olston?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
No.
Strong suit.
1761.
Order, Governor.
Three more. The ordinance amending ordinance number 1686, this is what we discussed earlier tonight about excessive use of braking systems. Once again, we refer to the long dispass 11411, so if there's a violation of this said ordinance, the fine would be $750 because it's a posted regulation.
Well, what it does is it pulls, if I may, section two of this ordinance pulls a penalty section and replaces it with a reference to like a Title I, Section 1411, A comma G.
Correct.
For penalties. So that's just basically relocated the penalty clause out of the original ordinance, so we passed, Anthony, I believe, the, 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 or something thereabouts?
Passed one.
So, this would simply relocate the penalty for this, which previously we didn't have consolidated then?
Discussion?
Yes, sir.
Is it $650 or $750? $750.
$750, here you got $650.
Second letter and page two, second paragraph.
That was the previous ordinance, and now the new ordinance under 11411 would be $750.
Because there's a flag, fines for all failure to adhere to posted regulations?
The one we passed earlier was $650, now it's $750.
And the one that we're going to have to report for was?
What name?
The previous one is?
Yes. No, absolutely.
Any more discussion on this one? Roll call, I mean, sorry, motion, so I understand motion to approve?
I understand motion.
Trustee Raisik?
Second.
Trustee Olston? Roll call, please.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Olston?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Or, if you would.
Thank you. Order?
Thank you, mayor. Two other ordinances, one, if the board recalls, we had a motion roughly two months ago, I believe, where we disclaimed easement rights on property that was developed probably 25, 30 years ago. It was discovered, we have an easement underneath someone's building, we've been asked to remove that easement right. So with this ordinance, it's just basically supporting our motion, it was done roughly three months ago. We disclaimed that easement right under a building that's in Joliet, morning.
That's right, we directed you to draft an ordinance, and now we have it, so we need the ordinance to be approved.
Yes, sir.
I understand the motion to approve the ordinance pertaining to easement rights.
I understand that motion, second.
Raisik and Gray, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Olston?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Or, if you would?
1761. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, mayor. And the last ordinance, DG, I'm sorry, you're building a new place, DG, right? Close. DG Governors Moni LLC came before the board, zoning board, I believe, last week to show a preliminary plat what the project's going to look like. There was a public hearing held, there were no objections to their plans for the project on Governors Highway. This ordinance tonight approves a preliminary plat of subdivision filed by DG Moni, Governors LLC.
And that is the one that would give us a right-of-way easement for a road going into, from Governors into the area of the...
Yes, sir.
And that was a favorable motion, I believe, or a favorable of the committee commission? Understand the motion to approve?
I understand that motion.
Raisik?
Second.
Gonzalez, discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Olston?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Ordinance 1761.
Thank you. Are you going to commence?
No, sir.
Next item on the agenda is old business, any old business?
One thing?
Yes, sir.
Anything on getting a new PA system that trustee Olston would recommend? Is that very true, all in favor of getting a new PA system?
Yes. I believe Minister Batista and Chief President Grzel have been working on, trying to identify... Because the court system's not going to be coming in and using our facilities, they're dealing with trying to, the accommodations that are expected of us for that, and they're going to try to incorporate it all in one. So I believe, hopefully over the next couple of months, we should see that.
We did talk about it yesterday in the meeting that I had with Minister Batista and the mayor. And Kevin and I today, when we were in Frankfurt, looked at some equipment that they had there, so I'll continue to be thorn in somebody's side as we work toward that.
How much was the stuff they had over Frankfurt?
$75,000, which actually is pretty reasonable.
I'm sure. Okay, just, so what is...
That included the screen, would go right over your head. Oh, sorry, excuse me. Turn the mic up.
All right, new business. At this point, we will turn the, to the open to the public knowledge, and if anybody from the public has something that they'd like to come and comment on, if you please limit your comments to three minutes and introduce yourself with your name and address, please.
I have something that I'd like to bring to the attention of actually the chief of police, if possible. My name is Michelle Drew, and I live at 5147 Fairgrounds Court in the Moni Fairgrounds subdivision. And I'm here today to discuss the party that took place last Saturday, the 20th, at 28045 Ruby. When my husband and I were leaving that Saturday, I was witness to some alarming activities that were taking place from this party. And it was basically quite a few cars, parking in no parking zones, blocking fire hydrants, blocking residents' driveways. People getting out of the cars with open alcohol, throwing gang signs, using profanity, cocked hats. A friend of ours that has a system on his house that actually witnessed people getting out of their cars with no clothes on, putting their clothes back on. So when we called, and I made a call to the non-emergency number, and I reported this, and we couldn't stay, and I couldn't speak to anybody because we had prior engagement, when we got back that evening, when we pulled into the subdivision, I looked around and said, oh my, this is awful. My husband and I went home, parked our car, got gloves, got a bag, went through our subdivision, our block, and Ruby, which is Fairgrounds, and picked up a variety of litter that went from the corner all the way through. And the litter consisted of open beer bottles, cups, plates, food, garbage, clothes, coat hangers, weed baggies, and toilet paper with feces. And so, to that extent, obviously, the next morning, when all the neighbors have witnessed this and went and obviously talked, instead of listening to hearsay, I would like to hear from you exactly what the police department did in regards to this. How did you handle this?
The report that I got from my staff was that they recalled their, on multiple occasions, the call request was for loud music. And in five instances that we were there, four of them, they turned the music down while the officers were present. And on the fifth instance, that was more than the officers were willing to deal with, and they actually shut the party down completely. But I don't have anything in the report specifically saying anything about garbage or damage that might have been in the parkway, or if there is somebody that actually has video recording of something that we could use to pursue a criminal case at some point. That's really the bulk of what I can tell you, because I haven't discussed it past that with the people who were on duty that night. There were two officers on duty, they did respond to it, the only cause that they outworked for loud music.
Okay. I just wanted to know how the police handled it, because we're finding weed baggies, so that tells me that this party was more than just a simple loud music party, that it was more like drugs. And this is, I lived here 20 years, and obviously, this has never happened. I've never had to come home, we've never had this in our subdivision, so it is quite alarming. And like I said, instead of listening to hearsay, I wanted to hear from you exactly how it was handled. Just another little side note, this residence has a pool, and it does have water in it, and it is usable, and the fence is down. And I do believe that does violate an ordinance, and I'd like to bring that to your attention, so I feel that that needs to be addressed.
I will make a note, I can talk to you.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Excuse me, before you step away, do you have any way of knowing how many people at the ballpark were there?
Actually, I would have to tell you that my block, there was, and this is a very rough estimate, just on Fairgrounds, I counted maybe eight cars that weren't normally, so our block was full. And on Ruby, the cars were parked on both sides from the stop sign, at least past Fairgrounds Court. And there were also cars parked on, right around the corner, and you will see if you drive by there, that they actually parked in the grass and ruined all the lawn, that they just, I think the public works just fixed by the fire hydrant. And a rough estimate, at least a good 25 cars that were parked.
Fifty people, minimum.
I couldn't tell you people.
Okay.
I think what's alarming is that it's the type of people that were coming, because if I'm finding weed baggies, and there's children in our neighborhood, and my husband and I went, and we were picking up stuff, and toilet paper with feces, I mean, this is just unacceptable behavior. This isn't an eighth grade graduation party, this just wasn't a home, you know, homewarming party, you know, we've got a new house. This was a little bit more than that.
Like, my time of being a trustee, we had a couple other parties that were very excessive, there were problems. And I mentioned, and it just went by the wayside, and I'm reminding everyone again, I feel that if there's going to be a party, and you know you're going to have 50 more people, you ought to have to pull a program out. That doesn't mean that's to cost you. That makes the police department aware, there's a large group that we had, so to check it out, and maybe that can prevent it from getting that bad, you know?
Fine.
I'm just implying with thought again.
That's good.
Appreciate it.
I mean, because really, honestly, just listening, and I know that I'm not that educated in ordinances and things like that. I think this party violated a lot of ordinances, and nobody towed a car, nobody wrote a ticket, nobody was arrested for open alcohol, nobody... I'm finding weed baggies, so there was nothing more done than turn the music down, so that's concerning to me. And moving forward, I know that you can't prevent people from having parties, but moving forward, I do believe that this might be more of a concern. This house has a transient population, and it's just not very comforting to know that in this house, and the type of people that have been coming to this house, that this is where the children wait for school buses, so it's just a little bit concerning. So I, and I don't really want to listen to a lot of the people, because a lot of people, you know, obviously say one thing, you listen to it, it can be gossip. And so, that's why I brought this to your attention, so...
Michelle, I'll address your other points with my staff.
Michelle, if I could, if you have an opportunity to go to the station and actually file an actual report regarding the issue with the details of the information, and information if you have pertaining to any photos or videos...
I actually have the weed baggies, we kept them, I brought them home.
Just to try not to put them all in one place, so you don't, everyone can just...
So, there, I do have a little bit of evidence, and I should have taken pictures, but we went at night. We, because, you know, to wake up in the morning and to see that, it's, to me, unacceptable. We have a nice, clean subdivision, and so we just did that because we need to take care of our property.
If you don't mind, after the meeting, if you could coordinate with the chief?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else for non-agenda, for the public items?
Good evening, Carolyn Scott, 26123 Southlandville, good to see all of you again. I'm kind of going to piggyback off this young lady back here, although I don't know, and I empathize with what she was talking about. There was a party that took place in my area just last weekend. And although these individuals did have a parking permit, it was a little bit confusing for me and my husband, because we're in an area where we live, across from Gorman Farms, so the area across from me is very vacant. My husband came home on a Saturday afternoon, and I'm in my house doing what have you, and he says, why are there 25 cars parked in front of our house? And I was like, what do you mean, 25 cars? Found out later, after my being nosy, even actually not nosy, I just wanted to know why people are parked in front of my home, and I wasn't having anything going on at my home. And come to find out, it was a resident in our area that was having a surprise party. Now, every last one of the vehicles, I did notice, had a permit thing inside their car. But I would like to, this person was in a cul-de-sac, I'm on the main street of Winfield. 25 cars parked in front of my house, and my not knowing what's going on was a little bit disturbing to me. I think if people are going to have a party or a function, granted, it was a surprise, but I'm sorry, I don't want 25 cars parked in front of my home. So I don't know what can be done about that in terms of, yeah, they did have a parking permit, but I wasn't hosting a party.
Chief, I assume that you issued the permits for that as according to the ordinance and everything else?
Yes.
Perhaps as a recommendation, I'm not sure what the stipulates, and there's not a lot of parking cul-de-sacs because of emergency vehicles and all that, we don't allow to park any cul-de-sacs.
These cars were parked, double parked, okay? So they were on one side of the street in front of my home, and they were also, they weren't in front of my driveway, because I do have a circle of driveway, but they were in front of the driveway itself from where I could exit and enter. But they were on both sides of the street, so if there's a parking hesitant because of fire trucks and all that, they still had an issue.
Well, clearly, on the parking permit that they're issued, it stipulates you're only allowed to park, DG, on the north and the west, east, north and east sides of the roads in those subdivisions when they have those permits. And that again, because those streets are narrower.
Yes, they are.
And we have to make sure that you're only, parking is only to be allowed on one side at a time and not on cul-de-sacs.
I guess my suggestion going forward, that whenever these parking permits are issued, that there should be driven clarification for those that are picking up those parking permits, that they only should be parked on one side of the street and not...
It's right on the permit, it's up there.
Okay, well, there was a nice little party going on last week.
Now, as a courtesy, we should encourage it to separate with the neighbors. But that's mandated, and it is a common courtesy for us, and for others, but I don't agree. Sorry about that, Carolyn. If you notice that again, and you see the parking both sides, super commonplace, so come out and address it. Because if there's a fire truck or an ambulance that need to get out, they probably wouldn't be...
They just not have been able to get through.
And that's the whole reason why that was supplemented. Is anybody else for open to the public? Anybody else for open to the public?
My name's Ronald Chris, CHIST. I live in Kankakee County. I'm here because in nineteen ninety-eight, this room, I was sworn in as a police officer for the village of Moni. I was a part-time police officer. I came from Mantino, where I had, I've been there seven years. I was a certified police officer when I came here through the part-time training act. I'm scheduled for heart surgery next week, so a little bit out of breath flight, people.
Just, uh...
No, I'm all right. I came here because I wanted to thank the people of Moni and the village board, because I never had a chance to do that. I got hurt on the job almost four years. Was answering a 911 call, slip or injury, went ahead supposedly, I have knee surgery, which I had, I had a stroke on the table. I left here, never got a chance to have any closure, say goodbye. I know Chief Sipkar, I know Mr. Batista, Mr. Farquhar, and I don't know anybody else, but just want to say thank you for having me here. And Chief, thank you for teaching me how to transition from a revolver to an automatic, because you were very patient, and I appreciate that.
Mr. Chris, thank you very much for your time of service.
You know, I was really glad to be here. I really was. And it was a really big part of my life that was taken away when I left.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else for open to the public, non-agenda items? Okay. I, we've already gone through executive session, nothing further in that regard. Time is now eight thirty-seven. I will undertake a motion to adjourn.
I'll undertake that motion.
Trustee Raisik and Trustee Gonzalez, roll call, please.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
And Holston?
Yes.